Please rise.
I, one of the entities to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any injustice or wrong.
All right, well, welcome everybody and those that might be online. So roll call.
Roll call. Rosenberg, present. Myler.
Here.
Aubrey.
Here.
Lass.
Here.
Pony.
Here.
Carney.
Here.
Roach.
Here.
Small hair. I don't think Miss Small Hair is here. Hudson.
Here.
Blackburn.
Here.
Force.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Archman.
Here.
Van Hook.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. You've all received copies of our last meeting in the whole minutes of September 30th. Do I have a motion for approval?
So, motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes approved. Okay. At this point, we will open it up for the first session of anybody has any public comments that they want to bring forth to the council? We would ask you to please identify yourself with your name and the ward that you live in or the company that you represent. And we ask that you do it in proper business decorum. And the question should not be pointed to any certain individual, but in general. And you limit your comments to no more than five minutes. So with that, I will open it up, see if anybody has anything that they want to bring forth at this time, or there is a second opportunity later on in the meeting.
Vern Mular, Ward three. I appreciate the opportunity to comment, but I'll probably have to reserve most of my comments for the second portion of the meeting. But I, my question is tonight about what you're going to have right there, the emergency operation plan. I pulled up your website this afternoon or set, yeah, this afternoon and looked at it. And I didn't see a plan to be able to review it or find out what it's about. So this is our, going to be the first opportunity to hear that and then have no other choice to understand it. Because I can't see it prior to it showing up. So I'm just want to know why it wasn't posted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any comments? Hearing are seeing none. We will open, we will start then with the proposals that we have in front of us. I think emergency operation plan, chief, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. So I did this a few years ago at a town hall meeting and I'm going to kind of go over some of the same stuff with Chief Brad White here. So our emergency operations plan is essentially a comprehensive document outlining an organization or a community strategy for preventing, preparing for responding to and recovering from emergencies or disasters, including defining roles, the responsibilities and the procedures that happen. You know, the entire emergency operations plan is maintained at the, is maintained with the city. Some of the stuff is not always available for the general public because some of the things do have plans in their evacuation routes, different things that, that may be stuff that we wouldn't necessarily release to the public. But so, so the entire, the entire emergency operations plan is not something that is, it is published as a whole that we have. So as we kind of go through, it's, it's a very, it's a vague document and it's that way on purpose. It's, it's a roadmap. It's a guideline in case there is an emergency. And when we look at that, you know, there's, there's certain things that give us the authority to have an emergency plan. The first is the Robert Stafford Disaster Relief Act and then just general Illinois administrative code that says, hey, if you're a local agency, you're a city, you're a village, you're, you're a county, you need to have an emergency operating plan. And then locally, we have our ordinance, which is chapter 37, the emergency operation procedure. And that is, that is basically what defines what is an emergency. And I'll, and I'll just give the example of like just, you know, a week and a half ago where we had a tornado come through town. So they'd say, well, was that an emergency? Is that a disaster proclamation? So when you look at what a natural disaster is, you know, obviously human made calamity, flood, conflagration, cyclone, tornado, earthquake, explosion, obviously. Anything that would have destruction of property to an extent that extraordinary measures must take place to protect public health, safety and welfare. So we kind of looked at this, this most recent thing that we had, it was definitely on our radar and we looked at it. And, and while, while we did have a tornado touchdown, it didn't reach the, the measure, it didn't reach the magnitude where we felt like actually implementing or having the mayor, because that's the first thing that actually happens, is that the mayor with a written declaration under oath, he declares a natural disaster in our town. Okay. And then that starts that process of activating the city's EOP, the emergency operations center, and then all of that stuff that kind of goes into those places. Now I say that, it doesn't necessarily mean that we didn't actually do stuff that is in our emergency operating plan. And I'll kind of go over that as we, as we go through this and I'll, and I'll give some examples of some of the things. Because everybody has roles and responsibilities. And I'll just say that the night of the tornado, while we had our police that were out there patrolling the streets, our fire department was responding to calls and our police department did exactly what they were supposed to do. We, we, we take care of life. You know, life safety issues first. And when we find out that there weren't any life safety issues, then it becomes, you know, property destruction, stuff like that. They're, they're on the phone calling Public Works who is coming out that night because Public Works has a responsibility to, to keep the streets clear, to take care of their infrastructure with the water waste, wastewater treatment plants, the sewer, the storm sewers, all of that stuff. And then even the next morning with community development, getting in touch with code enforcement officers to go out and then look at some of the property damage to see what that might need to be done on that end as well. So all of those things that are in our emergency operations plan, while we didn't actually activate our emergency operations center or declare a natural disaster or declare an emergency, those things were all happening behind the scenes. So there's just some common terms that were in there. So obviously the, the person who's in charge of it all is really the mayor of the city. And then from there, it comes down to the director of public safety, which is myself. And then we have our emergency operations plan. We do have an emergency operations center. It is a, it is, it is at Firehouse Four. That was something that was done several years ago. The community room or the training room at Firehouse Four is designated as our emergency operations center where it has televisions, phone lines, computers, computer setups. And then our secondary emergency operations center would be the public safety community room. You'll see things like incident command. It's, these are common terms that are used in a lot of different, actually all emergency operation plans throughout the country. There's common terminology that's used from the federal government, from FEMA on down to all of local municipalities. So that way everybody's operating under the same guidelines, under the same principles. It's kind of a plug and play thing that, you know, if we know that we have an incident command and different, different terminology, that the county can come in and we're going to know what they're talking about. They're going to know what we're talking about state and federal degree. So. Some of the things that, you know, that our emergency plan does, it's, it's all about planning, mitigation, and then recovery, response and then recovery. Okay. So it really starts out with a lot of the planning. So a lot of the things that we talk about at our EOP is, is trying to mitigate those things. So while I can't control where there's, where there's going to be a tornado, what we can control is through things like our building codes. So to make sure that our community development has, is doing the correct thing when we're, when we're issuing building permits. So that way we're building our structures so that way they, they can withstand some of these things. Our Public Works is involved in making sure that our storm sewers and our, our water treatment plants are able to continue working and that our infrastructure is there to try to mitigate those things. Because when these natural disasters, when these things happen, we need to make sure, same thing with our fire department, our police, is to make sure that we have those, that equipment, that manpower, those mutual aid agreements. And I think when we, just about two weeks ago, Jeff Taylor and the Public Works thing had a mutual aid agreement with P-Win, is that what it's called, or Public Works? It, it, it went with basically a, it's, it's mutual aid agreements that are all covered in the, in the emergency operations plan with schools, with hospitals, with electric companies, with Public Works, with other fire departments, with other police departments. So that way, when we do have one of these emergencies, we have these plans set up that we can get the help that we need. The basic documents of the emergency operations plan, you know, it's, it's, like I said, it's a roadmap. It's, it's, it's something that's there. There's not a lot of specifics in it. The specifics that change over time are names, places, businesses, locations and stuff like that. But the way we respond is, does not necessarily change all that often. So you have the statement of purpose, which is, is self-explanatory, the situation, concept of operations. You have your operations center, you do NIMS, which is a, NIMS is the National Incident Management System. I mentioned earlier that we all have the same terminology, the same training. NIMS is a common training that is set up through FEMA. That's been, we've been doing NIMS for 25 years or more. The emergency operations plan also sets out the functions, responsibilities, the line of succession. So that way, when we have these things, we know who is responsible for what. And it's all just spelled out there. So that way we know who's responsible. And then if that person's not there, who's in line of succession? Who's the next person responsible? So that way, when you have these things, somebody's not saying, hey, well, I'm in charge of this. No, you know where it is. It's right there in the EOC. And then you have these functional annexes and they outline particular functions, basically potential situations that you might have earthquakes, tornadoes, fires, mass casualty incidents, terrorist things. And then, you know, the assumptions that we, that we assume will happen. And a lot of times what we assume is we, we want our, our citizens, our residents to be self-sufficient for the first 48 hours of something. Because there's a lot of times where we may not be able to get services to you within that amount of time, depending on what we have. So we're always, you know, wanting to educate people about what they can do to help themselves before we can get there. Because if we had a very massive disaster, there's a, there's, there would be a run on public resources. There'd be run on fire department, EMS, Public Works, all of that. And we would want people to be as self-sufficient as possible for as long as possible. And then we look at like our annexes. So you have a damage assessment annex that gives a roadmap for what community development is going to do. So when we're going to go out and assess damage after an incident, direction control, disaster, earthquake is basically everybody, evacuation, public safety and Public Works works with that. Hazmat, that's fire department. We don't touch that at all. Health and medical. So we get our EMS, our Department of Public Health, Mass Care, Red Cross is obviously part of this. The coroner, public information. One of the big things that when you have a EOP too, is controlling the information that comes out. And this is especially important, especially for our elected officials and stuff like that, is keeping that information flowing and having that information come from one source. Because when you have a lot of things coming from different sources, then you can get different information. So that was something that we were, that we were very cognizant upon, on this smaller scale thing was having one message come out. was having one message come out from the city and then copying that message and then sending that out to our, to our elected officials, so that way they knew what was going on. Because a lot of times as residents, you're going to reach out to your elected official, you're going to reach out on social media and ask questions and this and that. And if we can get that information out and have accurate information going out in a timely manner, then that's going to help, uh, it's going to help quell some fears and it's also going to help with that free flow of information. Resource management, terrorism, weapons of mass destruction. There's, uh, and then volunteers, and there's a lot of, uh, other things. Just all of these different annexes within this, uh, within this book. And when I say it's a binder, it's, it's probably, it's probably a six inch, five or six inches thick, but we have it all digitally as well. It's available to all of our, all of our directors, uh, all of our department heads, so that way we can have that available. I talked a little bit about the National Incident Management System, this is kind of boring, but, you know, it just improves the coordination and cooperation between public and private entities. And then these are some of the different, uh, training classes that are available that, that all of our first responders, uh, are, are doing. I C S one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, eight hundred. Uh, there's, there's a whole, there's a whole litany of, uh, NIMS training, uh, that our officers go to either online or in person. Sometimes these classes are a week to four weeks long, depending on what you want to get uh, and how, how deep into that you'd like to get, but, uh, very, very good stuff. And then part of our, uh, part of our E O P also is our Incident Action Plan. And you see these, these are generally just, uh, specific events where we'll create an incident action plan for. Uh, this would be like our fireworks, parades, city fest, different things like this, uh, where we don't really ramp up an entire Emergency Operations Center, but we'll have an incident action plan where we will pre-plan all of the stuff that's going to go on, all of the resources, and then have all those listed out. There's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of forms, government forms that we, that we, that we use for this. And then we have that all, so that way, it's kind of, it's like planning anything. If you're going to plan an event, you're going to plan a party, you're going to get all the stakeholders in there and you're going to tell them all the information that they need to know before, so you can have a successful event. And that's exactly what we do with, uh, incident. And that's really, uh, a quick, quick, uh, kind of thing into our incident, our Emergency Operation Plan. It's a dynamic, um, uh, a dynamic, uh, document per se, and that it, uh, there's a lot of things that change and things change over time, but the, the core principles of it really remain constant, um, you know? So what we're, what we're, what we're usually constantly updating is, uh, names, dates, our names, phone numbers, addresses, um, different types of M O U's that we might want to have. Like I said, there's probably twenty different M O U's or twenty-five different M O U's in there with the school districts and churches and hospitals. And then while we have an Emergency Operations Plan, St. Elizabeth has their own Emergency Operations Plan just for their building. The same thing with Memorial Hospital and these major things. And all the schools have emergency operating plans, so then we have access to that stuff as well. Brad, anything to add?
No, I, I think, uh, Chief covered most of that. This, this is a great resource for us to identify the resources that we're going to use. Like I said, every incident's different, every entity operates, uh, in a way unique to their stuff. Fire, EMS, you know, police, uh, but we're well-versed in this too. So we don't, we only do this here in town, but like for the fire side, we, we travel out to do it. So we have folks that have gone to the hurricanes down south and been in command positions. Uh, the Amazon building collapse, the, the chemical release up in Madison, different places like that. Myself and others are on the county incident management team. So we're, we're well rehearsed in this, thank goodness, outside of O'Fallon. Uh, but we are experienced traveling throughout St. Clair County, Madison County, to help manage those incidents at those larger scales. Because like, uh, the chief said, it overwhelms the local resources. And that's the biggest thing with it is, these are emergency operations plans are implemented when your local resources just can't handle it anymore. So if that had been a EF three tornado that ran through town and overwhelmed everything we had, and we started bringing in those mutual aid partners from whichever agency, that's when something like this would really stand up and start to be utilized. But otherwise, um, if you can handle it locally, you take care of it locally. When you need to bring in a lot more resources from other areas, then something like this gets put into play and each person plays in their role.
Yeah, and I, and I mentioned earlier a little bit, but, you know, while we have an E O C or an, an Emergency Operations Plan, the county has one as well and the state has one as well. So even with this last one, you know, we were in contact with, uh, with St. Clair County Emergency Operations Center and talking to them, because some of this didn't happen in our city. It happened in the county venue, but within our fire district. And so, um, you know, we're work, we work with them as well, because they do this a little bit more than we do, because obviously they're a county, and same thing with the state. So if we have something major like that, it's nice to have those resources available to us. Any questions from the council, Andy?
I, I would just throw out a couple of things. For example, some of the, the, the things that are used now that weren't originally in plans. There's a, a plan that if we had something major and we couldn't get vehicles into it to use our drones to fly overhead to see what was critical and what we may have to do to get into that area if there's a real need, uh, that's in the plans. Uh, we mentioned about the, uh, Public Works, uh, for example, in, in this most recent case, uh, Public Works had to get staff on hand because power was out, out at the sewer plant. So they had to get staff out there and make sure that the emergency backup systems were operating. We also had two lift stations that were out because of power outages, and they had to get backup power running to them so that we didn't have any backups in there. There was ongoing communications on this. There was about five of us in messaging back and forth, keeping everybody informed of what was going on. The chief was leading that, uh, to make sure that everything was going according to plan and that, uh, there wasn't any need to go to the next level or anything like that, so.
Yeah, and there's, there's a lot of, quite a lot of planning that goes into, not just with this document, but just in general, like, making sure our facilities have what they need, like our generators, and make sure they have power and make sure our Public Works has what they need to keep the water running and to keep the sewer running and, uh, and all of, all of that stuff. Uh, there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in the background before this even starts, just to try to mitigate some of those things for when it does happen.
And when you see mutual aid agreements, that plays a big part into this too, as to who we've got mutual aid agreements or who we're going to aid in case of something like this as well. Anybody have any questions to the chief? Jerry?
When, when was the last time this was exercised? It sounded like you had one a week ago, Friday, but.
I, I can't tell you the last time we had an actual E O C activation. Eric, Eric, would, would you know from, uh, being?
Here in O'Fallon.
I don't think we have had one.
I don't know, we had a unified command post set up in Farvey Heights for, uh, a high-profile case.
For some of the protests, yeah.
Where we were really concerned about protests. Um, and, and I think what gets confusing at times for those that don't understand it, the reason that, you know, we don't want to release all the details from an incident action plan and why residents may have come online tonight to look, to see what that is. It's, it's, as the chief pointed out in the beginning, it's strategic to keep our, our citizens, our officers safe. Uh, if, if we broadcast where, um, we would set up first aid or where our different things were located.
Yeah, and it does, it highlights a lot of critical infrastructure that we have within the city and just puts it out there as, hey, here's our, here's our playbook, copy it.
So Chief, the, the only time we've activated the E O C since I've been here was the ice storm. What was it, oh, four, oh, five?
It was six.
Oh, six? Um, and that was kind of a mini E O C. There was a group of about six or seven of us that sat in the public safety, because we were with, most of the city was without power, and that was what brought that on. But so, that's the only time.
And that's the big thing about the E O C and the E O P, is to get all of those people that I mentioned, that line of suggestion, all those people in the same room, talking together and working together, and then filtering that out. So like, I'm not going to go out and handle things on the street, just like Brad may not, but we're, we're going to be in the E O C and we're going to be delegating responsibilities and what are our resources, putting things together to try to make sure that we take care of our citizens the best way we can.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you very much. Unless there's any other questions, I'm going to move it on over to, uh.
Yes, Jerry?
As I recall, when you looked at the, uh, whatever they call a federal thing is, there's a requirement to exercise.
No, you mean had to do drills?
Yeah.
We do, uh, we have, the last one we had was, oh, we did a, we did somewhat of a tabletop last year. Um, and from a, from a perspective of public safety, fire department practices quite a bit, and the police department with their command staff, uh, does go through things. As far as a large-scale thing with the city council, we have not done that in a while.
The other thing I would like to say is you have a unique, uh, resource in this community. You have a lot of military people who've done this stuff in their sleep. And over and over and over, we've, we've exercised this kind of thing. And, you know, you might want to have some of those people, uh, look at this and see if it makes sense to somebody who's not inside but outside.
And it's funny you mention that, not funny you mention that, but, uh, we are, uh, Chief White and, uh, is, is, we're looking at potentially implementing, uh, a volunteer program, uh, of volunteers in public safety, uh, that we're looking to get off the ground and running within the next, uh, you know, three to six months, uh, that would help with some of these things, uh, kind of like a, um.
Kind of like a modified CERT team.
Yeah, like a.
Community, uh, registered response team. So when we have these disasters, um, we have some civilians that we can tap into. Folks that come with military experience is kind of what we're looking for, uh, prior first responders. Folks that can help step in and alleviate public safety folks from having to babysit power lines or helping to gather resources and different things that would take away, um, some of our.
Yeah, and a lot of times those people also assist with implementing these plans and the trainings and stuff like that. So it's a good idea.
Other question, Rod?
Yes, your training process, is this annual, annually, or how often?
Well, like, from the fire side, uh, so fire side uses this incident management system daily from a, one truck response to a, a structure fire. Um, all of our folks have to go through all the training that's on that slide, all the I C S courses. Um, and then there's annual refreshers that we have to do on the fire side. Uh, our officers have a, another list of classes they go through as well. So it is something that is trained not only on paper, but on the fire side, police side. Incident, uh, management system is, uh, something we just do daily, it's part of our routine. There's a whole structured system within that NIMS, you know, as far as incident commanders and safeties and everything like that. And that's just built in our protocols is how we do business day to day.
Yeah, and once you've done the NIMS classes and you're not required to go and do them again, and there's no refresher for that, but we're consistently sending new supervisors to try to get those, um, those higher-level classes to get certified in those. I know, uh, Lieutenant Patrick Felte is actually, um, teaching, uh, for Illinois Fire Service Institute. He's teaching some of those classes. Uh, the big classes now are, uh, coordinated, uh, response to, uh, mass casualty events and different things like that, that all kind of coordinates in with, uh, with the E O P. Because we're seeing, it's not, not necessarily a tornado that might come through, but if you have a, a, a shooting, uh, like a, a mass casualty event, like they had in, uh, Highland Park with the parade, that's something that would also activate the E O C as well. So those are, those are things that we're constantly training on over at the police department, um, that, all those things.
I will mention too, just real quick, there is a, uh, NIMS Class Four elected officials as well. Um, and it's actually a free course. So if anybody is interested in that, we can definitely point you towards that training, just to give you an idea of what that system is and how it works. It's a free course, I, I don't know if it's still online, but it's a course we can load, host locally at no cost as well.
If you find that, can you send that out to us?
Absolutely, please.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Ryan, the floor is yours. Cover things on the library.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. Uh, the last time I spoke and gave an official update to this committee, uh, was actually the Finance Committee way back in June. So my goal here tonight is to bring you all up to speed on where we are with our master plan implementation and a potential new building project. So speaking of that master plan, it was completed in March of twenty twenty-three. It consisted of a public survey, a community engagement workshop, interviews with staff, and a review of our current space. His findings break down into the six key areas as highlighted on the slide. You can see that our children's area, uh, is too small. The location where we are geographically located in town may not best suit future growth. We have poor acoustics. We have a need for more multi-purpose space, more study rooms, and greater utilization of our outdoor space. So with this information, the library board considered two main options, to build on or to build new. Building on was quickly found not to be cost-effective, costing around twelve million dollars for only six thousand more square feet. Nor would it address those geographical deficits that I mentioned earlier. So with that, the board began pursuing new construction and reached out to Mayor Roach in August of twenty twenty-three to formally express interest in the city-owned property north of the Public Safety Building on Seven Hills Road as the potential location of a new building. A new forty thousand square foot facility would meet both our current need and future needs as the city continues to grow. Such a building project is estimated to cost around twenty-five million. This cost analysis, a copy of which is included in your meeting materials tonight, was conducted by Holland Construction. They aimed to include both soft and hard costs, as well as an escalator for future inflation, so that twenty-five million dollars would be an all-in number. For comparison purposes, our current facility is around seventeen thousand square feet. It was built in the early nineties, when the population of O'Fallon, coincidentally, was around seventeen thousand people. So why do we need a new library? It's not just because a study told us that we did. Libraries are no longer about books only. They are community hubs that provide education, access, and support in ways that no other institution does. The need for physical space has grown, not shrunk, to meet these evolving demands. First, the library supports, or rather plays a vital role in supporting education, providing programs like tutoring, storytimes, STEM clubs, and maker spaces that directly reinforce early literacy and complement the work being done in our excellent local schools. Teachers have told us firsthand how they can see the difference between kids who attend our summer reading program and those who don't. Those who do return to school in August, much more ready to succeed and have less catch-up to do from being off all summer. By filling these educational gaps, we're not just offering enrichment, we are actively ensuring that children in our community do not fall behind. Second, the idea held by some that libraries are declining simply does not match reality. Last year, roughly a hundred and thirty thousand people visited our library, with June alone bringing in thirteen thousand visitors. We hosted nearly five hundred events, drawing around twelve thousand attendees, and many of those programs reached full capacity. Our circulation numbers tell the same story. While digital checkouts are indeed growing, we had sixty-four thousand of those last year, our physical checkouts continue to grow and remain strong, with roughly two hundred thousand items borrowed in the last year. So this is not an either-or situation. Both physical and digital formats continue to grow and remain strong. Next, the demand for our services has outgrown our current space. As mentioned earlier, when the library was built, the population of O'Fallon was around seventeen thousand people. So just like demand on our schools has increased, demand on our parks, demand on our roads, our police department, and other infrastructure, the demand on library services has also increased. Children's programs are consistently at capacity, and despite adding extra sessions, we still have. and despite adding extra sessions, we still have to turn families away. Our study rooms are fully booked, limiting access to students, job seekers, and remote workers who rely on these spaces. Our event space is too small, forcing us to take larger programs offsite. I mentioned that master plan study earlier. When we did our community engagement workshop for that, we actually had to go to PD to host that event. Our event space is not only the issue, but also our staffing space. Behind the scenes, we are stretched thin. We've expanded our team in recent years to meet the growing needs of our community, but the space is not expanded with them to accommodate those new employees. We need more room simply to serve our community effectively. And finally, at least on this slide anyway, while the role of the library has transformed, its importance has not diminished. Technology has made services more efficient, allowing staff to focus on higher impact tasks. Those things that truly make a difference in the lives of our patrons. Self-checkout and digital apps can handle routine tasks, freeing up staff to help patrons with resume building, online benefit applications, notary and passport services, and even a new legal aid program. Libraries, at least good libraries, are not static institutions of the past. We are adapting, responding, and growing to meet the modern needs. So as that domain continues to rise, we must ensure that our space can grow with it. Basically, the bottom line is that our community needs a library that fits its growth. People are paying for these services through their tax dollars, and they're using these resources and record numbers. So the question isn't whether people need the library, it's whether we as a library are equipped to serve them at the level that they deserve. Currently on your screen, you've got some numbers that I've already echoed here, um, showing you the stats from our last completed fiscal year. This next slide shows you some new numbers. Um, I especially want to call out that last one, the 7,702. So typically libraries track the number of cardholders we have, which we have around 14,000. But that's an imperfect number. Some households get a card for everybody in the family, and then only one or two people end up using it. Other households might have one card and everyone in the household uses it. Um, so it's not always a terribly accurate number. But according to the latest census data, O'Fallon has 12,461 households. This means that we have at least one active, unexpired library card in 62% of the homes in our community. Like I mentioned, in total, we have 14,000 active unexpired library cards, including 2,000 that were just recently made in a partnership with District 90 and St. Clair School. We do all of these things. There's just 2%, or rather, 2 cents out of every single property tax dollar spent. You can see there on the slide how a typical household tax dollar breaks down. Only the township collects fewer tax dollars than the library. So speaking of taxes, the median home in O'Fallon pays about $135 annually in property tax that supports the library. That's about $11 per month. That's cheaper than Netflix, cheaper than a gym membership, cheaper than a Big Mac value meal at McDonald's. Looking to the future, a new building with $20 million in bonds would add an extra $149 for that median household. That brings the new total tax bill for that house to $284 a year, or $24 monthly. It's an increase, no doubt, but it's an increase that goes a long way. Numerous studies have shown that for every dollar invested in a local public library, that community sees around a $4 to $6 return on that investment through things like job support, business development, and educational resources. And as previously mentioned, those educational resources directly lead to better student outcomes. So next steps, the library board is currently deciding how big of a bite they want to take with this new building project. How many square feet and at what cost? We're working with various partners, including all of you here on council, to help make that determination. We're also considering other funding sources so that this new project is not 100% reliant on the sale of bonds. For example, we have roughly $5 million dollars in the bank set aside specifically for new construction. We also have the potential sale of our current building that could help mitigate some expenses. And of course, there are state grants that, if funded in the future, could also help us out. I mentioned the team that we're working with, and I've already mentioned Holland, who did our pre-construction cost analysis. We used FGMA for our master plan study. We're working with Bernardi and all things related to the bonding process. In fact, there's a one-pager from Bernardi in your meeting materials tonight that outlines the various tax implications on households at varying bonding amounts. Creative Entourage is our marketing firm. Um, they'll be sending out a mailer in the coming days to every household in O'Fallon. That mailer will include some of the numbers I've shared here tonight, along with an appeal to participate in a online survey and community engagement workshop. So please keep an eye out for that. We want your feedback. Encourage your friends and neighbors to complete that as well. And then the other, uh, firm we're working with on your slide is Every Library. They're a 501(c)(4), and they provide general strategy and messaging guidance to libraries nationwide who are doing building projects, um, who are facing censorship issues, whatever the case may be. They've helped numerous libraries in Illinois pass successful funding campaigns, and we are excited to be working with them. This is the second to last slide. We're almost there. So our vision of a new library goes beyond books. It's about creating a true community hub that brings multiple services together under one roof. Please keep in mind that all of these ideas are strictly ideas at this phase of the game. But by potentially incorporating the history museum into a new facility, we would ensure that local heritage is preserved and is accessible to everyone in a shared, modern space. A gift shop and cafe enhances the visitor experience, making the library a welcoming destination where people can relax, browse, and connect with their neighbors. We're also looking at practical, everyday conveniences like banking and postal services, making it easier for residents to handle essential tasks without extra trips across town. With all these elements combined, the library becomes a one-stop destination, a place where families can attend a storytime, grab a coffee, mail a package, and explore local history all in one visit. Our potential proximity to the Y even doubles down on those partnerships and that synergy, as well as the location to numerous schools in that neighborhood. And perhaps most importantly, these partnerships help us reduce the cost for taxpayers. By sharing resources and infrastructure, we lower operational expenses, ensuring that we maximize value of every public dollar spent. The idea here is about smart growth, creating space that serves more people in more ways while being financially responsible. All right, last slide. Happy to take any questions from the mayor or from the council. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ryan.
You said that current building has 17,000 square feet?
Correct.
And the one you're building is 40, you were aspiring to build 40,000 square feet?
Yeah, so the results of the master plan study suggested that a 40,000 square foot facility would meet not only our current needs, but accommodate for future growth, so that we're not stuck in that pickle, you know, five, 10, 15 years down the road.
That's what my question was.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, first of all, thank you, Ryan. That was a very good concise presentation.
You're welcome.
Not too much information, but enough to help, uh, us realize what's potentially happening. Um, my question has to do with, uh, based on the master plan and then the, the strategizing that's going on right now, how are you all or the board, how are you prioritizing the ideas? Because back to your comment about partnering, I know there are a number of groups in the community that highly value community meeting space. So I think like the Rotary Clubs, a lot of the service organizations, a lot of small businesses, they just don't have someplace to meet. So in terms of partnering, uh, like where would something, how are you deciding where things like that go in your priorities when you're reimagining a new library?
Yeah, great question. Thank you. So the entire master plan study is available on our website if you do want to dig through it, and there's some sample layouts in there, what a potential new floor plan might consist of. The current idea is to have two community room spaces. We have one currently, and truthfully, that's not much of a community room. We use that room pretty much exclusively for library programs. Um, so there's STEM clubs, I talked about, uh, tutoring, um, you know, any, any type of after, after-school programming happens in there. We're doing tax services in there this spring. So that room gets used a lot for, there's internal events, meaning there's not much opportunity for external events. The new layout suggests having two rooms, one that we can keep internal and the other one that we can make external. And when it's not being used external, we can have simultaneous events going on, or perhaps events that overlap. Like if the elementary age kids are doing something in one room, we can have teens doing something in another. Um, it would just give us a lot more flexibility, not only for library things, but for public use. So that is definitely something we are considering.
Ryan, great job. I don't know if this is a question you'd be, uh, able to answer for Sir Walter, maybe you. Can you explain, since they have their own board, when they bring a project of this magnitude, how it really comes through and, and where the council is or is not involved? So, um, Ryan actually could probably talk about this pretty well too, but the governance structure for, uh, our library is a little different than all of our other departments. There's a state law, I think it's called the Public Library Act, and, you know, while, um, the mayor and council approve the, um, the library board members, then the library board is actually in charge of managing the money and setting all of, setting the budget and dealing with personnel. The board hires the library director. And then the board is the one that sets the tax levy for each year. The city council approves it, but it's merely ministerial, um, because we got a legal opinion about how that that is what the, the library has that, that power. Um, however, if the city was going to issue bonds for a public library, that vote would be by the city, not by the library board. So, um, that's how those, you know, those would overlap a little bit. Um, and if, you know, I, I'm not remember if you mentioned it, but, uh, looking at doing a referendum on, uh, the tax, property tax issue, I get, you know, in November of 2026, I think is the, uh, is the target. Um, to put something like that on the ballot would require a vote of the council. The library board cannot do that. So that answered your question.
So ultimately, it goes to the voters to make the decision.
Yeah. That, uh, Ryan, do you have anything else you want to add on that?
Uh, no, I just reiterate that you are correct. The library board does not have the ability to issue those bonds, which is why the council would have to approve it. Um, the city would be the, would be the issuer of those, and that referendum in fall of 2026 would be a non-binding referendum to help inform your process as council members on how you want to vote, uh, on that measure moving forward after that vote.
Right, well, yeah, because the, the referendum may be a little bit stronger. For state law, they're called advisory questions. Um, and so, uh, Ryan is, is correct. It would be non-binding, but, um, you know, we had talked with the library board all along that they need to get vote, you know, uh, opinions from the voters on that before the city council should determine whether to issue those bonds.
And I have a quick question, going back to space. Um, first off, shameless plug for the book sale coming up, because that's one of the biggest fundraisers the end of April. How much time and space is lost? That, just having that event, like, programs that you have to cut and, and things like that because of that?
Because of that book sale? Hmm, it probably displaces 10, 10 events that we just put on ice for that week. Um, yeah. Yeah, I would guess, because mo-most of, most of our events, especially the daytime events, uh, for the preschool age children, um, are, are during the morning and during the daytime. Yeah, that's where, that's where the biggest conflict comes in.
Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, uh, we're going to move into a couple other things. One, I want to remind everybody tomorrow is election day, so please take advantage of having the opportunity to vote and go out and vote tomorrow. Um, we also have a town hall meeting will be held on the ninth. Uh, chief will go over the emergency planning again, and I'm going to give a, a brief recap on the past eight years. And with that said, uh, I want to go on to the next topic, and that is St. Allen Mine. Uh, several months ago, uh, the council said we'd move forward and see what we can maybe develop, uh, with uh, St. Clair County on taking over, uh, the St. Allen Mine area. Uh, we have submitted a formal proposal, uh, to the county. Uh, we have not heard back from the county. Uh, last word that I know is the formal proposal that we submitted, uh, to them, which had them, uh, paying us so much over a four-year period of time, uh, to help bring that park back up to speed to start with before we, uh, we fully took it over. Uh, that is right now in the state's attorney's office, and they are still remi-reviewing the document as far as I know, and that's a word I heard, uh, late last week as to what, what the status was on that. Any questions on that? Yes.
Um, does council get to see a copy of the formal proposal that was submitted?
Huh?
Does the council get a chance to see a copy of the formal proposal that was?
Well, if it's approved, uh, we'll bring it back and then we'll, because they may make some revisions to it, so.
I, I guess the question is, when we, my question is, when we talked about it, we were like, from my perspective, we were like, yes, go ahead and talk to them. I didn't know that we were making a formal, uh, uh.
We have talked to them. They agreed on certain terminologies, and we submitted a formal proposal. Our attorney drafted a formal.
You did not have come to us before it was submitted?
It will come back to us for formal approval. We first got to see what the county, the county's probably going to want to change language, so, uh, before any firm, you would see what the final, yes.
And we'd have the ability to?
Decline it, or, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. That's like with, uh, any contract negotiations. You don't see all the contract negotiations that go back and forth on labor agreements until there's the final one that's drafted for approval, and then it's either approved or rejected by the council. Okay, uh, there had been a request, uh, for some time, uh, about what was, what was a necessity of the IML conference and what, what was gained by it, by our people, uh, attending? So, uh, the members have submitted, uh, to me, and I have summarized, uh, some of those, and I will read, uh, what those who were in attendance this past year, what they gained, uh, on the major items from the, attending the IML meeting. Uh, I'll start with Councilmember Blackburn. Having only been on the council for three months prior to the conference, my attendance helped me to get better prepared to be active on this council. The open forums with members from other communities was very helpful to hear how they handled different situations and moved their city forward. This included meeting council members from local cities as well as throughout the state. Other good sessions were to hear, uh, the experts explain the Open Meeting Act and Freedom of Information Act, and how that impacted city meetings and information. From Councilmember Campbell, he learned about community development tools used, such as how cell phone tracking is used to determine placement and businesses, uh, which drive sales tax revenue. It coincides with the technology that we use to gather data on the impact of our sports park attendance. It coincides with the technology that we use to gather data on the impact of our sports park attendance. From Councilmember Carney, it was a learning experience to hear all of the public guidelines and requirements to make sure that you're in compliance with open meeting requirements. This is not just meetings, but conference calls, chat rooms, and other activities that may be considered public gathering. From Councilmember Phoney, the Alder Person Roundtable was most informative, having open discussions on the issues and impacting their communities. One interesting subject was some of the municipalities' desire to separate from or dissolve their local townships and the discussions on future legislation and its impact. From Councilmember Hudson, many good sessions, but the biggest were the discussions with IDOT and the state on federal funding options for beautification of downtown areas and the networking with other of the communities on how we can hopefully learn more from each other's experience to help make our communities in Illinois better. From Councilmember Roach, there were three significant ones for me involving trends in the retail sales, retail landscape, the use of modern technology to advance delivery of all services through improved communications, and the integration of digital tools into long-term planning and how involve community members and how to involve community members in downtown beautification projects. Though through these discussions with other municipal leaders, I gained valuable tools on to address current and future challenges in our own community. It was also pointed out to me by our Director of Finance that Mr. Roach did not turn in any expenses for that trip, for travel or meals. From myself, the best sessions were the future legislation and impact on recent legislation on cities throughout the state and the state's financial outlook. The state has a flat employment outlook, ranks in the lowest five states' financial outlook, and is faced with economic uncertainty. From Councilmember Rosenberg, felt that two of the best sessions were on public utility, cybersecurity, and solutions for domestic and community violence. He found out that water, as a utility, falls under the EPA, and the EPA outsources their cybersecurity to state and local entities so that there is no agreed-upon cyber baseline for security protocols. He learned that there was, there are ways for laws enforcement to let schools know where there is domestic abuse systems, domestic abuse system happening so that the proper resources can be made available to students that might need them. From Councilmember Van Hook, he attended several sessions that emphasized the importance of proactive planning, strong financial oversight, and risk mitigation in municipal operations. His main sessions covered shifts in restaurant industry, the current trend in retail, retail's role in economic growth, and retail recruitment. So that was a summarization of what was learned by those who were in attendance at the meeting, so. Okay, with that said, that brings all of the items forth that we had on our agenda. Unless somebody else has anything to add, I will open it up for the second round of any public comments that anyone may have. Anyone have any comments?
Burnware Ward 3. Thank you for the information. Appreciate it. Long time waiting to hear the response to my questions in that regard. And also, I'd like to ask in regards to the problems that the public works had with their lift stations and their generators out at their waste treatment plant, I believe. I don't know what guidelines they use, but if you generally can either exercise your generator once a week for an hour, or you can run it once a month for four hours, because they do offer that, you know. For example, I used to, when I had to have the generators I would take in care of, I would always make sure they would run on the first Tuesday of the month at 10 o'clock, like they do nationally. And I consider that to maybe book them up that way. I don't know. But that's how I took care of it once I was responsible for and made sure that they ran. They might, you know, every once in a while have to do a, in that sort of business, they call it deadheading it, where you warn everybody what you're going to do, and you need to come in and drop the power and make sure your generator works. In a building like this, I supposedly hope you have an UP system that will carry you through if you deadhead it from inside the building, and the generator would fire up in certain length of time, but holds your essential equipment on your UP system that's uninterrupted power supply. I don't know how many of your systems have that, but hopefully someone that had the computer backup or your power bus stations are on those lines. Just a food for thought. Thank you.
Jeff, you correct me if I'm wrong. There was nothing wrong with the backup system. The backup system ran. You had personnel out there in case there was a problem. The failure was from Amarin Furnishing Power. And that we do have on a regular basis, all of our backup systems at all of our facilities are run through testing on a regular basis. Am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct. And we do have uninterrupted power supplies at all of our critical infrastructures. Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Destiny Penniger, Word 5. My question was related to the EOP. I had two, really. I was wondering if there's any correlation between District 90 and the city on their EOP. For example, the drills that the students have to do in the schools and whatnot, and their emergency plan, if it comes directly from the city, or if like the Board of Education sets their own EOP for the schools. And the second question was about the method of communication for the EOP in general. Like, for example, during the storms that happened, I didn't know if, I didn't feel like that there was one specific communication method. Like, I'm on Facebook, but my neighbor isn't. She was like, how are you getting your information about what's going on? And I was just wondering, what is your default method of communication when there is emergencies? Since social media is not used by everyone.
Now, your question, was that about the schools or about the city?
The first was about the schools and their emergency plan, and if it correlates with the city, but.
I'm just on her communications.
Yeah, the like, the communication is more so when there is an emergency, where should citizens look for their source of communication from? Thank you.
All right.
First off, the schools do put together their own emergency plans, but they do coordinate them with the city.
That is correct. I've been in contact with their security director, Mark Berry, just recently about their emergency operations plan.
And as far as communications goes, Grant, you can probably handle this as well. We have used all forms of communications to get the word out on anything. You would like to want to expand upon that?
That is correct, Mayor. We have a number of different ways to get the information out. We have levels of severity that we use. We do have an automated call-out system that can use all utility billing accounts. We also have a tool called Code Red, which is traditionally used for large events where we can contact every mobile device in the city in any geographic area we'd like to.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? If not, that being the last items that we had to bring forth, I would look for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Andrew had good timing. He was only probably the last.